Good morning, we are now live.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone present in the chamber and those of you who are listening online to the morning's business of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee. I am councillor Ian Carrington and I'm the chairman of the committee. Councillor Martin Griggs, vice-chairman of the committee, is also in attendance. A few housekeeping notes before we start. Could I remind everyone that the audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the County Council website and all your comments will remain accessible online as the meeting recording remains on the council's website. We have no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, that's the ones at that end of the chamber, and passing through reception, assemble in the front car park to await further instructions. Could I also remind everybody, myself included, to turn any mobiles, laptops, iPads to silent for the duration of the meeting and we have a hearing loop now activated for anyone who needs it. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman. We will try and ensure that everyone has an opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. However, I will close down the debate to ensure we keep to time, so I'd appreciate if contributions could be succinct and concise and ask you to indicate early when you would like to speak. We'll now move to the formal agenda, starting with item one, apologies for absence and replacement members. Jess?
Thank you, chairman. So I haven't received any apologies, however councillor Skinner will be replacing councillor Cook and councillor Ashton will be replacing councillor Lynda Wotton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning to you both. Second item on the agenda, declaration of members' interests. This is an opportunity for members to declare any pecuniary or other interests. Does any member have an interest to declare? I'm seeing none, but I would issue the usual reminder that if an interest does come to your mind in the course of the meeting, please indicate and we will record it then. Item three, minutes of the meeting held on the 12th of September 2023. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record and you will find those in pages fifteen to fourteen, I beg your pardon, pages five to fourteen of the agenda pack. You've all had the opportunity to read them, I'm not going to go through them individually. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Any errors they wish to point out? No, in that case may I have a proposer that they are a true record? Councillor Skinner, thank you. May I have a seconder? Councillor Hague, thank you very much. In that case, we will vote. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, members. Those are agreed as a correct record. Moving on, item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I don't have any formal announcements to make as chairman this morning, but I think it would be wrong of me to let this particular moment pass without commenting. We are, after all, the Environment and Economy Committee and the environment has been making itself felt very profoundly in the past few days. Really, two messages which I would like, and I hope colleagues will support, to go out from this committee. One is to all of those residents and businesses alike who have been affected by flooding since Storm Babette hit us on Friday. I've been out spending a lot of time in Wellington's and waterproofs over the weekend and I know that other members and officers in the chamber today have been too. There is simply nothing more soul destroying than a home being flooded out or a business being flooded out. We all know the amount of time it takes to recover from that. And indeed, let's also remember those people who might not have been flooded out but might have had water in their gardens, water approaching them. The stress and strain of it all is pretty awful as well and I think the message that I would like to go out from this committee is one of support and sympathy to all our residents who have been affected by what is, as we sit here today, an ongoing problem. And the second thing that I think we as a committee should do is give our thanks to all of those who have worked so hard to make the situation relieved, to try and sort problems out for our residents throughout the county. I start, of course, with our own county council staff, but it is not restricted to county council staff. I know that staff from all the district councils have been working over the weekend and through the night. We've seen fantastic work done by the emergency services. We pay particular tribute to Lincoln Jaffa and Rescue and also the police who have stepped in, often in very, very tricky circumstances when needed. And if I can give a shout out to some unsung heroes who we never remember but have been working incredibly hard, and that's all the staff of all the drainage boards across Lincolnshire, who I know that pumps have been running 24 hours throughout the night, throughout the day. The incredibly intricate task of trying to rebalance an overloaded system and move biblical quantities of water to try and keep people safe, to try and protect farmland. A very, very challenging job, which they've done extremely well. So I hope that message will go out loud and clear from everybody here today. I'm sure we will touch on this subject as we go through. Just turning back to the formal business, I would like to remind officers presenting reports to take these as read by members and only summarise the key points. So, we move on. We have executive councillor announcements, we have support councillor Di in the chamber with us, and we have councillor Colin Davy, executive councillor for Economic Development, Environment and Planning, on the line. Colin, good morning to you.
Yes, good morning, chairman and members and officers. And may I first associate myself with your comments in relation to Storm Babette, chairman. What I'd like to do this morning, because there's quite a lot to say, I'd like to give my update in two parts. Firstly, I'd like to address the issues around Storm Babette and update the committee. So, as you're aware and as everyone's aware, it was a very mega event on Friday. The intensity of rainfall was, you know, biblical as you said, but it's not the first time we've had an event such as this, 2007 and events since then. We have a new pattern of weather and that's going to impact on the way we need to do business in the future. To date, the flood and water resources team has been processing through over 600 individual reports of flooding incidents and have been analysing them to understand if they are related to internal flooding, a near miss, or whether we require further information. To date, we have confirmed over 200 internal flooding reports, but this is quite clearly going to increase as the team works through the remaining 368 reports to be addressed. We have also now logged 190 near misses. The situation is now generally beginning to improve with water levels coming down slowly. However, we still do have 16 flood warnings in place and monitoring as the situation will continue in locations such as Wainfleet. We are also very conscious that as water moves through river catchments, there may be further flood incidents. In particular, the locations on the River Witham in Lincoln where levels may not have yet reached their peak, and for the River Trent where there are concerns for later in the week when flood levels will be exasperated by high tides. At Torksey, the Environment Agency has preemptively been deploying sandbags so as to be ready for this eventuality. Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue have been pumping out in Dunston and that short ferry caravan park outside Fiskerton, but these situations are now being managed. There have been reports of numerous vehicles becoming stuck in floodwater and please, we would reiterate, that people should avoid driving through flooded roads. Current and ongoing information and advice is now being published on the council's website. As members will be aware, there have been a lot of concerns about Horn Castle in relation to what happened with the flood alleviation scheme there. And I'll reiterate to the committee this morning, I am of the mind that quite clearly something went wrong in Horn Castle. The last scheme worked adequately and protected that community. The Horn Castle one seems to have had a problem with it. There needs to be a full review, it needs to be open, it needs to be transparent, so the public and businesses of Horn Castle can see what went wrong and how it's going to be fixed for the future. And also, would say this, chairman, and with your experience in the planning world, we've had now a number of very serious events in Lincolnshire in relation to intense rainfall events. And we can no longer, I think, as a council, support in any way, shape or form the building of non-flood resilient homes or businesses in flood zones. I think we're going to need to take a much harder line. If government wants to override the planning authorities in that regard, then let it be on the government's head, but let's not have local decision-making putting, you know, poorly designed or non-flood resilient homes into flood zones. And I think that is a matter that all the local authorities in Lincolnshire need to discuss. And I'll stop there on the environment and Storm Babette update to see if members have any points or questions and then I'll update you on economic matters, chairman.
Thank you very much. Members, on Storm Babette or similar flood-related issues, questions from the floor? Councillor Fleetwood?
Yes, chairman, I'm here, but I don't know why I'm here because I really need to be somewhere else and that's looking after my parishioners in many places that are flooded. This morning I've had a very disturbed, well, I'm still receiving very disturbing videos of riverbanks with water coming through them and I think there is issues and there may well be a bank or two to be breached in the next few hours. And this is before the additional water flows come to base. There's too many properties going underwater and I've already indicated I can't make the entire meeting. I might even be leaving sooner than I've indicated to you.
Thank you for those comments. Does anybody else have a comment to make in particular? Do they have a question for councillor Davy? Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you councillor Dave for that update, as we've all spoken about this morning, a very serious situation and now heart goes out to those residents that have suffered the flooding. And as we know, being moved into a temporary accommodation is a very unsettling experience. It's not a holiday, it's a very stressful situation. Some people never actually recover from this. And I heard your contribution on radio in Lincolnshire yesterday, councillor Davy, where you gave some very direct answers to the questions there. So clearly we all have a role to play here to ask those questions and to provide those answers to our residents because those who have experienced it in the past did not expect it to happen again. So the question now is, are we as a council working with our partners, district councils of agencies, to support our residents in any way possible, to signpost or any advice, any guidance, any support? I believe this is a time when we do need to work together with all those partners to provide the information and if not, to signpost where that information is. Thank you.
Councillor Davy?
Yeah, thank you very much for that, councillor Taylor. I think the partnership is working very well and I think we are working collectively across the piece to help and support our residents wherever they are who've been impacted. I do think, however, that there are a number of people who probably haven't even reported into us that their property has been ingress by water. So I would urge through the committee that if you know of anybody who's had any flooding incidents or have not reported them into the Section 19 team, to do so. I expect that the total number of properties to be flooded to rise considerably over the next week or so. And that will require a lot of investigative work. I have therefore asked councillor Ashton, the chair of flood and drainage, to lead a full review into Storm Babette and the Section 19 work, but I'm also going to ask him to widen it to ensure that the intelligence we received about this storm was properly managed within the partnership working of flood and drainage across the county and that we should learn lessons from it. And whatever lessons need to be learned should be learnt quickly. So I agree with councillor Taylor, we do all need to work in partnership, but that does not mean to say where things have gone wrong, we should not be scared of criticizing a partner.
Thank you for that comment. Councillor Baxter, this is a question for councillor Davy, I take it? Excellent.
Thank you, councillor Davy. First of all, could you repeat the figures you said at the start, which I think were 200, were you saying 200 properties have been ingress and counting and 190 near misses and counting? Secondly, this is sadly predictable, the impending catastrophe of climate change is going to make things worse before they, well, it's going to make things a lot worse and this is going to come around a lot more regularly. Thirdly, do you think councillor Davy, that the Environment Agency has got sufficient resources to prevent this kind of thing happening and sufficient teeth to hold accountable those people who are not, who are allowing it to happen? Thank you.
I'll repeat the figures firstly, chairman. As I said, we've had over 600 individual reports into the flood risk and water resources team regarding flooding incidents. We've been analysing them, we've processed some of them, so I can confirm that we've had over 200 now confirmed internal flooding to property reports, but that number's going to increase considerably as we still have 368 of those reports to work through. And we've also confirmed and logged 190 near misses. So, as councillor Baxter, as you said, this was a substantial and major event and it's still ongoing in many ways, as councillor Fleetwood has indicated, with potential breaches of banks and collapse caused by the intensity of the rainfall and the pressure placed on the system. In terms of the Environment Agency and their role in climate change and managing the risks for the future, I suspect that government is going to need to invest considerably more money in terms of managing coastal defence and internal river defence. And there is, as I said in my statement, a conflict because government often overturns planning refusals for development in flood zones, which local authorities know shouldn't be built, they refuse them, and then a planning inspector who knows nothing about the locality overturns it because it meets a housing target. So there is some real challenges and conflicts. I don't disagree with you, we are going to see more intense weather patterns in the future and we need to prepare for that. But we also need to ensure that when we're building, when we're planning, we're looking at the long term, not the medium, short term or medium term, but the long term, and we plan accordingly. There will be a cost to that, but we're going to have to embrace that cost because, quite honestly, we're going to be dealing with more and more of these events otherwise and at some point the public will get very angry that they've been put at risk because of some other target that government might have. So there's a lot of work to be done on this. I look forward to analysis by the flood and drainage committee under Tom councillor Ashton's chairmanship and I'm sure there will be reports regularly into this committee as well where members can ask questions.
Thank you very much for that. I'm looking around the chamber to see if there are any further questions for councillor Davy. Councillor, Mrs. Austin?
May I just give a piece of information rather than ask a question?
If we could, because we are in the middle of councillor Davy's report, he just gave way to allow specific questions at this stage, so if we could come back to you later in the proceedings, we won't forget you. Does anybody else have a question for councillor Davy?
It's related to flood, you see, that was the thing.
If it's not a question for councillor Davy, I know we'd like to move on. Any other questions for councillor Davy? In that case, Colin, perhaps you'd like to resume the second part of your comments this morning?
Thank you very much, chairman. As we all know, facilitating business growth is a major priority for the council, for the executive in particular and for me personally. Team Lincolnshire is one of our most important vehicles for doing that work, focused on investors and the property sector. Team Lincolnshire held their first annual conference on the 17th of September and was attended by 97 of our ambassadors. Further Team Lincolnshire events for the year ahead will be sector-specific and geographically balanced to ensure maximum benefit for ambassadors and investors. The strength of Lincolnshire's manufacturing sector is sometimes overlooked, but we have plenty of world-leading businesses in that sector. Our Made Smarter programme is all about creating more world-leading manufacturers. Working with councils and leps across the East Midlands, Made Smarter is reaching a large number of businesses. We've assisted 87 businesses up to March 2023 and we've already supported another 52 in this financial year. Digital transformation and technology transfer are the sort of topics that we help businesses with. Diversifying our tourism base is also very important. We are producing a toolkit for businesses that will help tourism businesses to make the most of the opportunities that the completion in early 2025 of the King Charles III England Coastal Path in Lincolnshire will bring. Workshops will be held with businesses during January to March of next year. The second of the four birding trails is now live on visitlincolnshire.com. The Walls Trail joins the Coastal Trail. The Fens and Lincoln Edge will follow to give complete Lincolnshire coverage and a real strength to the nature tourism offer. Moving on to skills, our adult numeracy programme, Multiply, goes from strength to strength. After an incredibly successful first year, grants of £1,000 are once again available for organisations to support numeracy development in Lincolnshire. Employers and community groups in the county can apply to become a Lincolnshire Multiply champion. Last year, 48 champions helped the council deliver 267 courses to 1,260 learners across the county. The grants are awarded on a first come, first served basis and could be spent by employers on piloting innovative approaches to learning maths in the workplace or dedicating staff time to encouraging numeracy progression. Community groups may come up with ways to support their wider community in taking up multiply courses. In year two, the council is looking towards 60 grants to local businesses and community groups. Please encourage these employers and community groups you are in contact with to take up this great opportunity. Application information is available on the county council website. Progress continues on the energy theme that you discussed at the last scrutiny meeting. Our working relationships with the two electricity distribution network operators, DNOs, who cover greater Lincolnshire, continues to strengthen. In parallel with this, we now have and are already using to good effect an online interactive electricity supply and demand analysis tool to help inform both our and the DNO's infrastructure investments. At the South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone near Hole Beach in South Holland, private sector investment continues to follow on from the councils. One of the centrepieces of the scheme, the hub, the council's first innovation centre, has now been opened for just 13 months and by the end of this year, we will have reached 50% occupancy. Across the county, we continue to support small business tenants, which total around 115 in our five business centres, innovation centre and industrial and commercial units. Occupancy levels remain buoyant with a healthy mix of lease renewals and new tenants. Finally, I'd like to leave you with some dates for your diary for you to share with businesses. Our next business event will be in November, it is Lincolnshire's Going Global Conference on the 27th of November at the International Bomber Command Centre. The next Taming the Dragon's Investment Pitching Event will be held on Wednesday, the 22nd of November, from 5 to 8pm at the University of Lincoln's International Business School. This popular event is now in its 11th year and is a great example of collaborative delivery alongside Greenborough Streets Accountants, the University of Lincoln, the Lincolnshire Business Angels, Wilken Chapman and Nat West. The first business digital masterclass workshop will be delivered online on the 2nd of November on the topic of AI in marketing. Please do let the team know if you're interested personally in attending or if you know of businesses who would benefit from these sessions. At that point, chairman, I will cease and take any questions that you or members may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Any questions on that second part from the floor for councillor Davy? I'm looking around the room and seeing none at the moment. Councillor Austin will come back to you, but I think, before we end this section, but I think before we do, I will therefore thank councillor Davy and I will just ask whether there are any announcements from senior officers in the room. And again, seeing none. Councillor, Mrs. Austin, you waited patiently, you wished to make a comment about the flooding, I think now would be the appropriate time.
Well, it certainly sounded irrelevant now, but I was just going to inform that anyone who was involved with the large scheme that was done in the centre of Curtain that disrupted life for the best part of a year, Curtain was bone dry. So, a success.
Well, that's one piece of good news and it would, I think, be interesting, I'm sure, for councillor Ashton to explore, along with others, why that one worked, one another one rather famously didn't. I think the only thing I would say wrapping up this section is that when I was standing out there on Sunday, under brilliantly blue skies, with the water dragging, trying to drag the boots from under me, because even though the rain had stopped, the water level was still rising, you just do appreciate how small we are compared to Mother Nature. And we can try and mitigate the effects of Mother Nature, but we are never going to master her. And I'm sure that as we go forward with councillor Ashton's investigation and others, we will be looking to learn every possible lesson, because I completely agree with councillor Davy, this is going to become more intense. We are seeing a pattern here, just in the first 23 years of this century, of increasing numbers of events of increasing intensity. And that is something we are going to have to plan to learn to live with, not suffer from, but learn to live with, cope with, mitigate for and plan for. If there are no further comments from the floor, councillor Spratt, I beg your pardon, missed you there. Councillor Spratt?
Thank you, chairman. It did just occur to me, something, if I may mention it and ask Colin a question, we've had flooding in the ward I represent, as indeed other colleagues have and in my division as well. I want to know if everything's being done as far as Anglian Water is concerned insofar as cleaning drains out. Now, I know there's capacity issues with floodwater, but I think some of the residents would probably feel a bit more confident if they were assured that the Water Authority made sure the drains were clear, because we've got water, we've got leaves, we've got muck filling the drains up and they never seem to clean them these days like they used two years ago. So can we have an assurance from councillor Davy, my good friend councillor Ashton here as well, that we contact the water boards and make sure that they're doing all they can to maximise the capacity of the drains and the drainage system? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you for that question. Before I turn to councillor Davy, I would just observe that, I think you've raised a very important issue. One thing that happens in parts of our county, what we've had across most of it this time round, has been a very, very violent storm, so surface water. We also have issues in Lincolnshire with groundwater flooding, where in plain English, the water table rises above the level of the ground. And that can, even when it doesn't come above the ground, put tremendous pressure on foul water drains, where you get infiltration of the foul water drain purely by hydraulic pressure within the ground. That then both reduces the effectiveness or can cause backflows from the foul water drain. That happens in a place in my ward and the challenge that we face in encouraging statutory undertakers like Anglian Water is a very significant one. So I think you raise a good point. Councillor Davy, if you're still there, would you like to come back on councillor Spratt's point, please?
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I totally concur to the point that councillor Spratt raises. We do need to ensure that when working with our partners and agencies, that we get them to do the maximum possible of recognising the challenges of the future that we've talked about this morning. So I'm very clear, looking at the data that we've currently got, that there is no real pattern to flooding across Lincolnshire in this event. There are places that have never flooded that have been flooded. There are quite clearly going to be issues in which the Section 19 work will identify, probably around riparian ownerships. Small ditches and drains haven't been cleared out in some cases for years and those cause problems into the system. So I think, under Tom Ashton, councillor Ashton's chairmanship of flood and drainage, the review should look at all of these matters and take on board a discussion with all the partners necessary to try and work out- necessary to try and work out how we can move forward. I agree with councillor Spratt, there are going to be more and more challenges going forward, so we need to do the review properly, so at least we can see what those challenges are and try and find ways of managing them for the future.
Thank you very much indeed for that. Right, I think that concludes this part of the proceedings. We will therefore move on to item five on the agenda, which is the Lincolnshire County Council Carbon Report 2022-23, the greenhouse gas emissions report 2022-23. This report can be found on pages fifteen to fifty of the agenda pack. It provides us with a detailed overview of our current position against our net zero target set for a horizon of, from now, approximately twenty-seven years. In addition to reporting on carbon dioxide generated within the previous year, the paper discusses greenhouse gas emissions generated by the county council's activity and gives us context on the current picture. And the actions before us this morning, it's asked that we, one, note the work that has been done to quantify the carbon dioxide emissions across the county council's operations, and, two, support the work that is underway to reduce these emissions. And this report will be introduced by Dan Clayton, Sustainability Manager, Chris Miller, Head of Environment is also present to help with answering the questions, and we will take those questions after the report briefing. And what an introduction you've had to the vital task of meeting carbon net zero and responding to climate change when we've been discussing what is, of course, a weather event, but which we strongly suspect is part of a broader climate pattern. Dan, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so I'll take the report as read, but I've picked out some key points from the report, and I think we've had the twenty-fifty target that was approved in the green master plan that was passed in March twenty-twenty-one by the full council. And I've been conscious that the reporting that we do on greenhouse gas emissions has been kind of rather limited over previous years, so we've tended to put out a figure such as last year our carbon emissions were twenty-five thousand tonnes as such. So I wanted to provide much more context and detail about what our emissions are, where they're coming from, and what we can do to tackle them in the future. So it's intended that this will be an annual report that we will aim to bring to this committee each October to show what progress we've made, and also the plans for improving the quality of the data that we have. So I've tried to set out the emissions so that they're split by the different scopes that are identified for greenhouse gas emissions. So there's fuel used by the council on site, so that's like our gas and oil to heat buildings, and also fueling the council's own vehicles. Then there's what's known as scope two, which is basically our electricity-related emissions. So I've provided data on that. And then scope three is the kind of the area that requires more work, which is the indirect emissions that are not totally in the council's control. So it could be things such as construction of new buildings or construction of highways, procurement activity, and we're starting to try and improve the data that we have on that. And this report has got some initial figures on some of those indirect emission sources. Examples from other local authorities and large, complex organisations show that indirect scope three emissions tend to be the lion's share of emissions from organisations. So the NHS are kind of the leaders in this sector, and they found that round about two-thirds of their greenhouse gas emissions come from their procurement activity rather than from their energy use in their buildings and their field use. And I suspect that once we've got the full coverage of our indirect emissions, we will be in somewhat a similar place. So the report includes an action plan of improvements to data quality for the future. And I think, you know, overall, in terms of our energy use, we have made an encouraging start to reductions. So over the period where we've got good data, we've reduced our emissions by over half since two thousand and sixteen-seventeen, and that's from some of the policy decisions and investment in energy efficiency that we've made. A large reduction was around the street lighting figures. So in two thousand and sixteen-seventeen, we used nineteen million kilowatt-hours of electricity in our street lights. That's down to ten-point-eight million for twenty-two-twenty-three. That's produced an important reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, but it's also protected the council from rises in costs. So when the Ukraine war started, we saw about a twenty to thirty pence per kilowatt-hour reduction, sorry, twenty to thirty pence increase in electricity costs. So if you do a quick back-of-the-envelope calculation, that comes to round about two million pounds in savings that we would have spent on electricity if we hadn't done that work in switching our street lights to LED and reducing the hours of operation. So it's, as well as saving carbon, it's reduced the factual risk for the authority. So, and we do have data going back to the nineteen-nineties, and from those figures, in terms of energy use, we've made a seventy per cent reduction. We had a revolving green fund, in fact, we still have a revolving green fund that is available for investment in energy efficiency within our buildings. The council invested half a million pounds in that back in two thousand and eight-nine, and what happens with that is the energy cost savings that are made are reinvested in new projects, and it's kind of revolved around several times. So we've had about four million pounds' worth of investment in energy efficiency from that initial money. But the thing is that it's not a case of one more push and we'll be there to net zero. There's still some significant challenges. So converting older buildings such as the building we're in now to net zero will require considerable investment. And when you've got listed buildings, it's a challenge to do retrofit to make it energy efficiency. We've got a lot of issues around older parts of school buildings that would need to have insulation improvements and heating improvements. The other issue is that the cost of some of the running the things like air-source heat pumps at the moment is slightly above what the cost of running gas-fired heating systems for buildings like this. So we need to take that into account as we're moving forward. And the other issue is that as we start to look at scope three emissions, there will be increased volatility in the data. So when we do large-scale building projects such as the Sleaford Secure Unit, the year and the bit that that takes place, there'll be a jump in emissions, but when we have less construction activity, emissions will fall away. So that's why the context that this report provides is important for the future. So, yeah, so we've made a good start, but we've got a lot more work to do going on in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed for that introduction and indeed for the report, and I think your comments just underline how interconnected everything is and how complicated it is. It's very easy to say we'll go for net zero. Actually achieving it takes a huge amount of maths, it takes a huge amount of science, it takes some very challenging engineering, and as you've implied, it takes an awful lot of accountancy because none of this stuff comes free, and yet it must be done. I'm going to turn to members for questions, but can I kick us off with one? It seems to me there are two issues here, and I wonder if you could comment on this. One is the quantum of energy that we use overall as a council, and the other is the type of energy consumption. It's good to see in some of these numbers in your report that electricity use, along with the use of other fuels, is going down, but presumably in the long term it will have to rise, given that electricity is an energy source which can be decarbonised, whereas you can't decarbonise gas, for example. So we will see over time, I take it, a change not only in the overall quantum of energy used, but in the types of energy, and I wonder whether you could address that.
Yeah, I think that is definitely a key point, and if you look at it at the moment, electricity is a higher carbon fuel than gas. So one kilowatt-hour of electricity generates about two-hundred grams of carbon dioxide, and one kilowatt-hour of gas generates about hundred-and-eighty grams of carbon dioxide. In the next couple of years, I expect those figures to cross over and electricity will become the lower carbon option. What we tried to do in the report is introduce some new key performance indicators, which we'll report on each year, which looks at energy use per metre square of building space that the council operates. So that will show not just that our carbon is going down, because that could be related to what's happening on the national grid, it will also show that we're using our electricity more efficiently. So I think that's going to be one of the key, the key markers for future performance, that the electricity that we are using is being used much more efficiently than we have in the past, and I think that's where we have been making progress. But a lot of the sort of easy, quick wins in energy efficiency have now been done, and the next round is where we require more investment, I think.
Thank you very much for that. Members, questions or comments, please? Councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much, Chairman. You've very eloquently expressed the view that a lot of the saving technology requires a lot of front-loading capital-wise, and also in the report, we've got quite a few older buildings, but you can resolve that another way by adding cladding to the outside. So there's that. But there's nothing in there about brown source and air source where you could actually reduce some of your carbon input, and hydrogen seems to have missed out. I know the government have decided that hydrogen isn't probably the way, but there's a lot of people working on it still. And for me, the final question on the report about procurement will be, when you buy new vehicles, new equipment, it's about disposal of those items as well. I mean, I used to be working with some leading manufacturers as chief engineer, and even twenty-odd years ago, I'd make sure that a disposal programme would be written down, and as much as you could, you'd recycle everything. Thank you, Chairman.
Dan, would you like to come back on that?
Yeah, so we weren't really proposing solutions in this report, it is just an overview of the data, but what we have got is, we received some funding earlier this year from the government and an organisation called Salix to do a heat decarbonisation plan for our top twenty energy-using buildings. So that's underway currently, we've had some initial outputs from it, but that will look at exactly those solutions that you suggested around air-source heat pumps and ground-source heat pumps and potentially hydrogen. And I've looked at, there was one, which was one of the fire stations, and we've looked at that and identified that we could reduce greenhouse gas emissions by seventy-five per cent by a series of improvements around the heating and the building fabric. I think as well that a lot of these decisions to switch over to air-source and maybe ground-source heat pumps in the future can be built into future maintenance programmes over the next sort of ten, twenty years. So we know that in fifteen years, a building is, its gas boiler is going to reach the end of its life, that can be programmed in as part of a long-term maintenance activity. And then around the disposal, I've been working with the procurement team on some new environmental criteria for when we go out to procurement, and that is definitely included in there for certain types of equipment, especially around vehicles and waste electronics as well. That's been included within the contract details, so, yeah.
Thank you very much indeed for that, and I hope you will also include going forward not only the issue of saving energy, but using our council's property to generate it. You mentioned fire stations, and I'm thinking now in councillor Fleetwood's patch, Bardney Fire Station, which went down a very intensive micro-generation route some years ago, and we have a lot of properties, and it would be nice to think that we will see, for example, solar panels on every suitable roof, not all roofs are suitable, as well as things like energy-saving insulation. Moving on, councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome to this report. I'm pleased to read the content and see that it's quite honest in terms of acknowledging that our energy consumption, sorry, our greenhouse gas emissions would have come down anyway, even if we'd stood still. There's a paragraph that explains that because we're moving, as a nation, we're shifting towards more renewables and greener energy, that emissions are falling. So I'm pleased that even despite what's happening at a national level, we're still falling anyway, and that we are doing, as a county, we are shifting ourselves in the right direction by various means. I've got a few specific questions. First of all, figure six, which shows the fall of emissions over time, that figure six only goes up to twenty-nineteen, is there a reason why it doesn't go up to date, and is there a way to bring it up to date? Secondly, mostly about schools, academy schools, are they included or excluded from our emissions? So if we shifted all the schools to academies, would that bring down our emissions without actually doing anything? We've got lots of fire stations with PV, we don't have many schools. Now, the first question might answer the second question. Where we have got schools under our direct control, are we doing enough in terms of looking at the PV options for those schools? I think we've only got two or three secondary schools. Have we looked at those two or three secondary schools for the scope for PV? Lots of schools seem to have oil. Are we, have we put biomass as a replacement for oil anywhere, and are we exploring the options for biomass heating rather than oil-fuelled generators or oil-fuelled boilers? And finally, home-to-school transport, it's my understanding, I'll wait for people to put me right, that we spend something like eight million pounds on taxis for children to get to school, before you even get to buses and private transport. Is that included anywhere, either in scope, within the scopes, or perhaps it's a scope three emissions? There's got to be a massive carbon impact of ferrying schoolchildren all over Lincolnshire to get to school. Obviously, schoolchildren have got to get to school, but I wonder if that's something that is addressed within this report? Thank you.
Mr Clayton, there's a few to pick the buttons out of.
Yeah, so the figure six is, I reproduced that graph out of the Carbon Management Plan Three, which was produced in two thousand and nineteen. So that data hasn't been updated yet, but it will be in Carbon Management Plan Four, which is in production at the moment and is due by the end of the year. So the reason why that data, it was backcasting to nineteen ninety to get what our starting emissions figure was. Around the academy schools, so what happens when a school switches to academy is that we take that school out of this year and all the preceding years as well, so it's completely removed from the figures. So they just show our own consumption. Around PV on school roofs, yeah, definitely, I'm really keen to do more things on that. We have a small number already, we've had a scheme where we have, we've worked with the County Farms Estate, and we've put some solar panels on a grain dryer at Eastville Farm, and we want to expand that on other sites as well. In the latest year's figures, around just under two per cent of our electricity consumption was from our own generated electricity from PV. I'd like to aim to get that up to five, ten per cent, and I think that's a possibility from the number of roofs that we've got. There definitely is opportunities, and we do get from some of our early solar panels an annual payment from the feeding tariff scheme that's still ongoing, because some of those ran for twenty-five years. I'd like to reinvest that money back into the solar PV. In terms of schools that have got oil, that is a real challenge. I'm not aware that we've looked directly at biomass, I have worked with those systems in the past. I think that there's been a really big consolidation in the biomass sector. So there was one company that basically bought up lots of them and then increased the prices. So there has been kind of more volatility than there used to be in the biomass price market. And then, yeah, home-to-school transport, that would be, that would be really tricky to calculate. I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is possible to calculate it, but the academy would be scope three. But the academy would be scope three. The the company running the bus would be scope three. But there'd be two different sets of scope three. But I'm sure we could put a calculation on it. So, yeah, that that would be definitely something to include in future versions of the report, definitely.
Chair, if I might come back briefly. Thank you very much for those comprehensive answers and sorry for the barrage. You said that you'd like to be able to reinvest the the funding that comes back from the feeding tariff. Who has the power to make that happen? Is that something that politicians do or you do as a budget holder?
It's probably us as the budget holder directing into that. I mean, the the thing is that, you know, it it comes through in in dribs and drabs that don't necessarily fit with the budget year. But but, yeah, I think that is something we need to 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 make sure that it is allocated specifically for PV, because it's kind of been propping up other bits of our activity in the past. So, yeah.
Thank you very much for those questions and those answers. Moving on, next is the vice chairman, councillor Griggs.
Thank you very much. Just a quick one for me. I know there's a school next to me, and it's a fantastic school. But I've had similar complaints, just talking to people who live around other school areas as well. The lights in the car parks at the schools are on quite late at night, and they're on until nine o'clock, I think it is, even on Saturdays and Sundays when no one's on site. Now, obviously, that's just one school, and it's a new school. So I'd imagine the energy efficiency of those lights is quite good. But that's not the case in all schools. So is that something potentially we could look at, having smarter lighting systems? I know obviously that has a cost of implementation. Or just, you know, being able to turn them off when nobody's there or no one's going to be using the site, unless they're for security reasons. But in that case, we probably don't need, I think there's 24 lights in the school next to me, probably don't need all of them on.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something we can we can look at. I mean, the with the, the schools are kind of directly responsible for their own budget at the moment. So we don't have a huge involvement in their day to day activity. But we can provide guidance on them. And the the Department for Education has just, well, last year published a a new sustainability strategy for schools. And it kind of addresses those kind of issues around the use of energy on school sites. So we can, you know, direct schools to that best practice guidance that's come out from DFE, definitely.
Thank you very much. And waiting patiently, councillor Bunny.
Thank you very much, Chair. Dan, very interesting report and very pleased to see it. But one of the things I wanted to mention is really about the work forward. I noticed you mentioned Market Raisin, Fire Station with solar panels and so on. I just wonder what cooperation we have between local organisations and so on? Because it does occur to me that we have these solar panels on LCC property, we might have them on district council property. We talk about how we could actually go into community energy schemes, but we don't actually at the moment appear to have anything which has joined up to look at that. Taking Market Raisin, you have got there next door, a whole strip of land which Tesco's haven't built on, which could have further panels. There's also a Tesco store next door. Those two combined could possibly then reduce electricity, which could go on to the new estate, which has just been built up the road. Now, I know you can't go back on that, but I think in the future, that sort of joined up thinking is going to be required. I felt another one, which is West Lindsay issue, I appreciate, but the sports centre in West, Market Raisin, plenty of land there next door to a county council school which uses old boil boilers, because obviously it's an old school. But again, a joint project there could save a lot, but we don't seem to be talking on those lines at the moment.
Yeah, well, well, interestingly, there is a a new fund that is due to be launched in the next couple of weeks, which is the Community Energy Fund, which is being distributed by the Midlands Net Zero Hub. I've been talking to a couple of the district councils about potential submissions to that fund. We haven't spoken to Market Raisin, but I've been speaking to colleagues at West Lindsay. There's been a group in Caster looking to set up a community energy scheme there. There's also interest from from Hole Beach and and within Lincoln. So so that funding's out there, and it's due to be launched. I think there's, the the government department have got a webinar on it on at the end of this month, and and that will be an opportunity to to put funding into community energy projects around the county.
Yes, on which, on which subject? We do have to remember, and we heard about it in this committee, in the report on energy across the county, which came through this committee and then went on to the executive board in recent months, the inflexibility of the grid, not only in terms of providing power, but in terms of receiving power. I think councillor Bunny makes a very important point, where you do have empty land which may not be phased for use for a number of years. We could put in on a temporary basis, a solar farm. And indeed, I've been involved in a scheme through my my district council role, the Sleafordmore Enterprise Park, where that was a possibility. But all of a sudden, you discover, just as it is very hard to get electricity into that facility, it is very difficult to get electricity out of it if you generate it for other than local use. And I know that the council continues to engage with government on the issue of the grid, but the grid has to evolve, and it has to evolve fast to become much, much more flexible to allow us to do exactly the kind of things that we've been talking about this morning. Councillor Ashton, next, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm delighted to note the progress that we've made over recent years. And I'm delighted that we continue as a council to take a sensible and a pragmatic and arguably an efficiency driven approach to what we're doing. It's genuinely reassuring that we haven't gone on the mad dash for heat pump, when the evidence is, we've heard this morning, is that the efficiency just isn't there to justify it. Because fundamentally, we are a public authority with a requirement to deliver public services and 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 a balanced budget. And I suppose what I'm looking for is just a reassurance that we're going to continue in that vein. And I say this because I pick up, we're in the public sector, for example, the Environment Agency is now talking about the carbon footprint of beach re-nourishment. There is a carbon heavy activity. And frankly, I couldn't really give a second thought for the carbon footprint of beach re-nourishment when I think of the number of businesses and properties and and lives that that depend on it. So just keeping that into into perspective and appreciating as we identify the challenge of carbon emitted by, where we don't have direct control as an authority, I'm thinking perhaps in terms of building, if we're going to build a road, I just like that kind of reassurance that, you know, we're we're not going to see the costs of building that road driven up unnecessarily by, for instance, insisting on types of machinery in the rest of it. At the end of the day, we have got a duty to deliver this stuff at a cost and and a cost that's efficient. I'm just just looking at that reassurance that we're carrying on in the way that we've been doing and not following other areas of the public sector.
Yeah, I think we we can provide that reassurance, that that's the the approach we've been taking. I think the the first lot of energy efficiency and and low carbon investment were also cost saving measures. So, you know, adding insulation and LED lights all reduce the running cost of buildings. I think now we've we've got to a point where things like air source heat pumps will increase the running cost, at least initially, as electricity is significantly more expensive per kilowatt hour than gas. So we've got to look at those costs and do a cost benefit analysis. I think where heat pumps might come in is when we're constructing new buildings, because the the building regs and some of the local plans in the area are pushing you down that route in that they're restricting the use of fossil fuels on site. So you can only effectively then switch to an air source. So so I think the the air source heat pumps that we get will be in newer new buildings rather than switching our existing estate to it, at least initially, until until the the building regs are tightened up again. So.
Yes, just on that, can I just remind everyone that certainly one of those local plans you're referring to is no doubt the central Lincolnshire local plan. It doesn't drive you to air source necessarily, it drives you toward renewables and onsite micro generation. And certainly for larger commercial buildings or developments of a group of residential buildings, ground source, which is more efficient, has not been used nearly enough, in my view. That is another option. However, we have in the chamber with us executive support councillor, Dyer. Tom, you'd like to come in at this point.
Thank you, chairman. And I'd just like to put on record my thanks to to Dan and Chris for for putting this report together. You've made clear it's not an easy report. So grateful for you both and your teams putting this together. And I think it's it's a it's a strong commitment that we're going to present this to the committee on an annual basis moving forward. So members will be able to scrutinise this council as hopefully we progress in a positive way toward net zero. And I I don't think for any minute that this report's designed to be a backslapping exercise at all. It's a, it's an honest marker as to where we are in the road, road to net zero. So hopefully, moving forward, it we can, we'll be able to see a positive direction of travel in our emissions. And I think we need to emphasise as a council that it's not Dan and Chris's responsibility for this council to achieve net zero. It's the responsibility of every single member, officer and every single director. Everyone's got a responsibility there. And I think as a committee chairman, I think it's important that we emphasise that, because some service areas may may not be performing as well as others. So certainly on an annual basis, I think there's a lot of good work that this committee can do and driving change from this council. And this one might get me in trouble, chairman, for highlighting such a negative statistic. So I'm going to mention it anyway. So I I'm really disappointed to see that despite Covid, moving forward, our car, our car mileage is slowly creeping back up. It's slowly creeping up. Now, unless I've read the figures wrong, it's over 12 million miles travelled by LCC staff in 22, 23. Now, my fag packet calculation, that's over 15 round trips to the moon. Now, I know Lincolnshire's a big place. I get that Lincolnshire's a big place. I understand that our staff do an important service. But is it really right that we're we're making, as an authority, 15 round trips to the moon? Now, I understand some of those vehicles will be electric, but some of them won't be. So hopefully, moving forward, we can see that figure drop, being driven, driven literally down through the use of remote working and other facilities. So I think it's unacceptable that that's that's crept back up to where it has. Thank you.
Do you wish to come back on that particular point, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, I think we had noticed that the the figures had started to 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 rise back up. And I think, you know, the the Covid pandemic, it moved online meetings and homeworking kind of forward 10 years of probably where it would have been otherwise, that the technology became, you know, ubiquitous and people got used to it. So I think there's, yeah, there's definitely maybe some kind of staff engagement campaign there to think, do you actually need to travel? There are obviously some meetings, particularly around adults and children's services and some of the highways do that, where they have to go to site. But there are a lot of issues where probably we we don't. And we could, we could maybe look at, you know, just making sure that they are bona fide reasons why people are are doing that sort of travelling, yeah.
I'm sure you'll pick those up. And I think one thing that will be interesting when the next version of the report comes back to this committee next year would just be to comment on that. Because I think the issue of mileage, and it relates to a comment councillor Baxter made about getting kids to and from school, in many ways, it's going to be a little bit tougher for us to make reductions purely because of the nature of our geography. As you said, Tom, this is a very, very big county. It's a very rural county with relatively poor public transport facilities. And that is going to have an impact on both our operations as we move toward net zero, and also, I think, on on companies and private individuals in the county who obviously have to be on the same journey as us. But, yeah, I'd associate myself with councillor Dyer's comments. Thank you very much indeed for the report. It does underline, doesn't it, that it's very, very easy to declare a climate emergency? But if all you do is declare it, that's just virtue signalling. What actually matters is the hard work, the engineering, the maths, the changing the way we do things. That does take time, and it is a bumpy road, and it's not without challenges. There will be steps forward and there will be steps back. But an excellent, an excellent report, and it shows not only that we've made a start, but it gives us a benchmark for future years. So the actions before us are as follows. We have a proposal that we record the various comments made by members of the committee and the questions put, those will all have been captured. Subject to that, I move that the committee notes the contents of this report and supports the work that is underway to reduce carbon dioxide emissions across the county council's operation. Does anyone dissent from that? I'm seeing no dissent. Thank you very much indeed. That matter is agreed. Moving on to item six on the agenda, which is proposals for scrutiny reviews. This committee is requested to consider whether it would wish to make a suggestion for a potential scrutiny review topic to the overview and scrutiny management board. The report is on pages 51 to 58. Any suggestions put forward today will be reviewed through the scrutiny priority, I knew I'd have problems with this, through the scrutiny prioritisation toolkit, much easier to use than to actually say, which will allow the scrutiny team to assess the level of priority and urgency of each topic identified by each committee and make relevant recommendations to the overview and scrutiny management board. Our actions today include that we consider the request from the overview and scrutiny management board for a suggestion for an in depth scrutiny review by scrutiny panel A, bearing in mind the following criteria, which are found in the documents before you and detailed in the relevant appendix. The report will be introduced by Kiara Hadzianu, scrutiny officer. We will then take questions after the briefing. Kiara, over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. The report before you seeks to consult members of this committee regarding a potential allocation of an in depth reviewed scrutiny panel A. The criteria to be met for any topic to be put forward for consideration are listed indeed under section actions required on page 51 of the report, and then again detailed in appendix A. When considering a potential topic for a scrutiny review, the overview and scrutiny management board will reflect on the level of priority of a topic or a thematic area, and will need to ensure that this topic is not duplicating the work that is carried out elsewhere, whether within the organisation or by any of our partners. Moreover, it must be ensured that the scope is not too broad, and therefore, an in depth review can be completed within a set timescale. In section six on page 53 of the report that you have before you, you'll find commentary received by the executive director of Place. The executive director of Place did not propose a topic for consideration for scrutiny panel A to be allocated due to the completion of two scrutiny reviews under the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee's jurisdiction in 2022 and 2023. The existing allocation of the review topic, traffic management policy review, to scrutiny panel B, is another reason why a a topic has not been put forward, as the existing allocation aligns with, again, with the Place Director, its remit. And then lastly, there's the presence of two significant ongoing transformation projects within communities, which falls again under Place, that could potentially create substantial workload demands. Nevertheless, members are still able to make their own suggestions as part of today's discussion that will follow shortly. The committee is advised to agree on up to one topic to be put forward, which will subsequently be included in the final report to the overview and scrutiny management board. All topics will be filtered through the prioritisation toolkit, and they will be found in a, an appendix to the report that will go to the overview and scrutiny management board, and that will be considered on the 21st of December at the next meeting. So this concludes my briefing to you, and I'm happy to take any comments and questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed, Kiara. Members, you've heard what the background is. Any comments, questions, observations? Councillor Baxter.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the invitation. I asked my colleagues in the independent group what what they might want to put forward, and I'm not sure if the tongue was in his cheek, but somebody has suggested the effects of a draft evolution deal on the environment and economy. And I would just put that there and leave it. And I would also suggest that, not just because of today, but but generally, we need to be, we need to see if there's any opportunities to improve the interface between the drainage boards, the Environment Agency, the Water Board, and particularly our highways department. The water, when it's on the road, becomes an issue. And sometimes, I see it also on the flood and water management board. So I know that that when the water's on on the road, it's it's our water. When it goes into the gully, it's our water. When it meets the sewer, it suddenly becomes angling waters, water. If there's a problem with it, then it's Environment Agency's problem. If there's a problem with it, then it's Environment Agency's problem and the drainage board's chip in there as well. If there's anything that we can do as an authority to prevent the water wrecking the fields, wrecking the roads or ingressing into the houses, then that's something worth investigating. I'm sorry if this isn't very well structured into a neat topic, but I'd invite anybody else to kind of say that's either a good idea or a crazy idea. I won't take offence.
Thank you very much for that suggestion. I'll come to councillor Fleetwood in a second. Can I just remind members, and I take your comments in absolutely the spirit they were meant, but when we come into this chamber or any other chamber and are serving on a scrutiny committee, we leave all political affiliations behind us outside the door. But I do take the comment in the spirit it was meant. I just wonder before turning to councillor Fleetwood, and I think you raise a very important point and it's one which has come up earlier in the course of this meeting. Given the fact that councillor Ashton and the flood and water management committee will be having a very comprehensive review of where we're going, I wonder, given the resource pressures which Kiara has referred to, which in plain English mean that we've had in our side of the council a pretty good slice of the cake in recent years, whether that is a matter which, at least in the first instance, would be being handled by flood and water management. So I don't want the two committees to duplicate their work. I wonder before turning to councillor Fleetwood whether councillor Ashton could comment on that.
I think obviously we will have to see what comes down in the next few days going forward, but I don't think there's any doubt that it's going to be quite a big piece of work that the flood and water committee is going to have to undertake. An initial conversation suggests that we will effectively be having working groups operating underneath the flood and water scrutiny committee in order to progress through simply the volume and the complexity of the challenge that lies ahead. So I sort of feel that that probably speaks for itself in the direction that probably ought to go.
Thank you. Councillor Fleetwood.
Councillor Baxter's commented about something I commented on way back from 2019 and before with regard to section 19 reporting, whether water should be recorded in outbuildings, in just in properties wherever. And the big issue is whose water is it? Because yes, everyone can keep pushing the ball along, kicking it in the long grass, but effectively, at the end of the day, if you have a resident going underwater, it's not pleasant. What we do need to get a grasp of, local authorities, all local authorities, is that there's been instances recently of people shouting for sandbags. And the issue with sandbags is very straightforward. You don't know if you were contacting the district council, the county council, where that level of coordination comes from, but then all of a sudden, in the dark of the night, a truck will turn up and it might have Bafo BT on it or whatever, and it will just drop a pile of sandbags in a location unannounced. People will scurry out as if it's a famine, looking for a bread loaf. And effectively, whoever's there first takes the sandbags. Absolutely no coordination, no messaging attached to it. And somebody, whether it's us as a flood authority, us as an environment committee, district councils, drainage boards, Environment Agency, somebody needs to grasp it. So I think that county councils, lead local flood authority should be trying to wrap this together somewhere.
I think that's a point very well made and certainly all of us who've been out with our wellies on in recent days, and that's a lot of people in this chamber, will recognise the situation you describe. And it's a basic truth, I think, that the sheer scale of the geography that we have in Lincolnshire mean that the county council and to a degree the district councils, in the middle of the night, will find it extremely challenging to get sandbags to everybody who needs them. And that seems to me, and again, I hope this is something that councillor Ashton's committee can look into, we need to revisit the importance of local pre-provision. And I think also the involvement where we have them of parish councils, in our rural areas at least, to make sure that we have things put in place ahead of floods arriving. That happens to a certain degree, but I'm concerned it doesn't happen enough. I don't want us to get too diverted back onto the issue of flooding because we have an agenda right in before us, but I will take councillor Bunny.
Thank you, and just a very quick one. I think this last week, we learnt a lot through our emergency plan that we were setting up. And it was quite clear that the plan that we had for our villages was working well, but all the surrounding villages were trying to get in because they picked up, and I fully feel for them, that they didn't have that same link. So I would feel that that's something that we could do with through the resilience forum in getting those plans together.
Thank you for that. So we've had just that one suggestion. What I would suggest to colleagues is that whilst we note councillor Baxter's suggestion, I think we all agree with it, I think at the moment, my feeling and I'm sensing the feeling in the room is that for the moment, we should leave that with flood and water management because they're actively doing it. It is, of course, something that we could come back to do, but I don't think there's much point as duplicating that work, which is clearly going to be a very major piece of work. But I'm sure that every member of this committee would be welcome to contribute, along with all other members of the council, to the work which Tom's committee is going to be doing. Do we have any other suggestions for topics? We don't have to put one forward. In that case, I think we will take it that we do not have another suggestion for the topics, although clearly flood and water management, their activities going forward is very relevant to the thrust of this committee and we will keep a close eye on that and keep in touch with Tom and his colleagues and the work that you and your officers will be doing. So as far as this item is concerned, we need a proposal. So I move that the committee notes the report, which we've had from Kiara, and that the overview and scrutiny management board is advised that the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee does not wish at this time to put forward any suggestions for a scrutiny review by scrutiny panel A on the basis of the statement from the executive director set out in section six of the report. Does anyone dissent from that? I see no dissent. Thank you very much indeed. That is agreed and another useful debate on a subject which is very, very, I'm listening for the sound of rain outside because we aren't through this yet. Right, we move on to item seven on the agenda, colleagues, which is the Theddlethorpe Geological Disposal Facility Working Group, six monthly update. This report is on pages 59 to 66 of your agenda pack. It's the regular update to members on the proposals for a geological disposal facility at Theddlethorpe. The report recognises the three main developments since our last update. One, confirmation of a public test by 2027. Two, further shaping of the work of the community partnership. And three, commencement of site evaluation studies, which will inform decisions over the site. And the actions before us this morning, the report invites us to note the progress of the scheme to explore the potential of a geological disposal facility at Theddlethorpe. This report will be introduced by Justin Brown, Assistant Director for Growth. Justin, over to you.
Chairman, thank you. So yeah, as you described, three main issues to cover, but I'll also just update members on the Community Investment Fund and on some of the conversations that we're having with West Burton about a fusion facility over the water. So I think it's always important in any report on Theddlethorpe that we stress the point at the top of page 60, that joining the working group and subsequently the community partnership doesn't mean that we support the concept, but instead, but instead that we are seeking to understand and to encourage clear communication, which will inform a test of public support. So councillor Hill and councillor Leyland from East Lindsay have formally now recommended that there is a vote to be held in 2027. So they have proposed that as a vote and you will see on page 60 that there is a response from Nuclear Waste Services, which I would summarise as saying that they are going to develop a clear action plan to provide the right information for people to be able to take a decision, more of which in a moment. And at the bottom of page 60, I mention that the community of Allardale, which is one of three in the country which was being looked at, has decided that the geology is not suitable and so the work on Allardale has been withdrawn. In terms of the community partnership itself, as you'll see on page 61, we have been really, really working on ensuring that our role as a relevant principal local authority is supportive of the community partnership. The partnership itself has now broadened its membership. It has voluntary sector, business, public sector, environmental sector representation on it. And members will remember that the community partnership is responsible for overseeing a community investment fund. And just over a million pounds has now been allocated from that community investment fund largely to schemes which relate to training, employment and advice for people in gaining employment, as well as some investment in community facilities, community playground, some cooking equipment for an OAPs club, et cetera. What you will see on pages 62 and 63, and a bit on 64, is a list of the very detailed studies that are now about to be carried out. They will be extensive and they will be detailed and they will be lengthy. And this is those studies which will form part of the action plan I mentioned a couple of moments ago, which will inform when that vote will take place. From our perspective as a county council, you will see that a lot of those studies are very relevant to the things that we do, environment, employment, tourism, et cetera. And therefore, we are needing to engage fully and effectively to ensure that those studies are balanced, that they take account of what we know is happening in the area and that where we need to, we can challenge any comments and recommendations in the study. And then finally, some reference to the work at West Burton. We continue to engage, as do our colleagues at West Lindsay, with the UK Atomic Energy Authority, who are developing the site at West Burton. One of the things that we at LCC are doing rather a lot of work on is commenting and inputting on their transport analysis. But another piece of work we're doing, which I think is particularly important, is trying to help cross Lincolnshire to be ready for the supply chain opportunities. Why is that important? Not just because they can win money from this government's investment in UK AEA, but also because the model of fusion is one that the government will want to export in terms of intellectual property across the world. And so if our businesses are around the table, then they get the opportunity to grow into export markets as well. So that's a brief overview of the paper and the position of where we're at, councillor Carrington, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much indeed. Before turning to members, just a general reminder, we are not the decision-making body on this matter. We are here to support local communities. The decision will of course be taken by residents in the area. So questions, comments from the floor. Councillor Spratt.
Thank you. Can I thank Justin for the very thorough report? I've got to be honest, I, pardon me, on page 61, I find it absolutely scandalous that this is going to take 15 years to evaluate and to sort out. When I read that point, I thought to myself, HS2. Are we not capable in this country of doing infrastructure projects quicker than that? It's not a decision-making body, I accept that entirely, chairman. But the idea that the residents in the area are going to have to wait for 15 years to find out whether this plant is going to be built and developed or not, and if the answer is not, the amount of taxpayers' money and council money that will have been wasted in the meantime, absolutely scandalous, 15 years, chairman. And I repeat that point.
Justin, in picking that up, I wonder whether you could unpick the obvious tension between, on the one hand, the comment about 15 years, and on the other hand, the fact that I thoroughly welcome, which is that local residents will get an opportunity, if we get our way, because it's what we've asked for and what East Lindsay has asked for, to take a decision on this in 2027. Over to you.
Yep, thank you. What we are doing at the moment is saying to Nuclear Waste Services, there should be a point where you can advise the public about the various aspects of this development, which is not at the 15-year point. It's at the point that councillor Hill and councillor Leyland proposed, which is 2027, because we believe that's a point where, as entered from an engineering perspective, you move from outlined business case into more detailed business case. And so what we are pressing for is that the action plan is really driven quickly so that the information that all of those different reports has can be collated to a way which gives the right level of information to take that decision much more quickly. Subsequent, then, very detailed information that engineers will need in terms of building and developing the site is the piece that would take the remainder of those 15 years. Is that clear? It's all about a gateway review to me.
Yes, thank you for that. There's clearly, with the facility of this complexity and given the nature of the material that would be stored in it, wherever it is finely built, and given the time scales involved in that storage, clearly getting the engineering very thoroughly researched is very necessary. But what you're basically saying, if I understand it correctly, is that by 2027, if we have our way, there should be sufficient information, if not to build the thing, but sufficient information for local residents to make a properly informed decision. And after all, making sure that they could make a properly informed decision was really the rationale why this council became involved in the first place. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, I'd share my colleague councillor Spratt's broad concern that this is just one of those classic cases of government nationally coming up with the most bonkers means of deciding major national infrastructure projects, that it could possibly have done so and effectively passing the book of that decision-making in a really challenging way, especially when you think of the scale of the project, the complexities of the geology and everything else that's involved. But my point is just picking up on page 63 and looking at the chart there on engineering and feasibility, I don't note anything in that section or anywhere else that's looking specifically at the feasibility of rail connections to and from this site, appreciating, as I understand, should this site eventually go ahead, it is very likely that the transport of materials to it would be by rail. And I think, again, having a broad understanding and an interest in this area, I think it's really important that we are influencing, if we can, network rail in the studies that I'm aware that they are in the course of conducting, that should this eventually go ahead, the rail link comes from the south, so to provide genuine community benefits to Sutton-on-Sea, to Mabelthorpe and potentially onward to Louth. I understand there's a potential for a through route, which would be marvellous, but I am concerned that there is a potential of simply a link from the north, which would effectively be alongsideing from be a long siding from Stalingborough, cut through the northern wolds, which would provide absolutely no community benefit, simply because of the network and how far you'd be away from anywhere else once you boarded a train. So I'm just keen that, first of all, that we're factoring this stuff in, in the conversations that are ongoing, but also that we are, I'm just questioning, why we're not picking up in this report what is clearly a very important part of that project, should it happen? Thank you.
Justin, would you care to comment on that, please?
Yeah, thank you. There is a transport feasibility study which is being carried out at the moment, and we are actively part of that dialogue and making the points that councillor Ashton raises. What I've given you in the report is a paper which went to the community partnership. So in the very top end of the report, in the summary, it references the transport study, but then later on in it, it doesn't. So there is a typographical error in there somewhere, but certainly from our perspective, yes, we are engaged actively in that transport piece of work, and it's a really good example of where an engineering solution and a local community solution may not be the same thing, and that the county council, the district council, the community partnership as advocates need to be saying, this is the sort of thing that should be required if this is to go ahead.
Thank you very much for that. I think it just underlines, doesn't it, the value, and I know that it was, for many people, were disappointed when the county council decided to get involved, or I remember when I joined this council, it was pretty well the first debate that I took part in, and my view was that we should do it precisely for that kind of reason. Irrespective of what the outcome finally proves to be, and that will be down to local people, they need the maximum support they can get, and the sort of technical input which our officers can make on subjects like transport and others is immensely important. I'm looking around the room to see if I have any further speakers on this item. Seeing none, I will then move on to the proposal. We will, of course, record the key findings and comments which members have made and the answers which they've received. Taking those into account, I move that the committee notes the report and the progress and developments identified. I also ask that the views of this committee are echoed in further formal communication and interactions with NWS as part of the progression of the activities planned. I also ask that a further update is shared with the committee in the next six months. Does anyone dissent from that? Seeing no dissent, that is therefore agreed. Thank you very much for your contributions on that item. That moves us to item eight on the agenda, which is the committee work programme. This item is on pages sixty-seven to seventy-two of the agenda pack, and this item enables the committee to comment on the contents of the work programme, and the report will be presented by Chiara Hadzianu, scrutiny officer. Chiara, back to you.
Thank you again, Mr Chairman. I'm very pleased to report that there's no changes on the work programme, and just to remind members that this is a living document, and I'm more than happy to be taking any options and opinions on topics and potential thematics of work areas that you would like to see included in our work programme. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chiara. Any comments from members? Any comments, any questions? I am seeing none. The action before us this morning is to review the work programme and highlight any additional activity which could be included. I therefore move, given the fact that we haven't had any further comments, that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages sixty-seven to seventy-two of the agenda. Does anyone dissent from that? I see no dissent, therefore, thank you very much, and that is agreed. That concludes the business of the meeting. May I thank everyone who's taken part in the chamber and remotely. We have met today under very, very trying circumstances, and I think we're all very mindful of the continuing impacts on our residents across the county. I'm sure we will come back to this, but thank you very much indeed for your time this morning, and therefore at eleven thirty-four, I declare this meeting closed.